At six o'clock, we'll call the meeting to order. If Phil can lead us in prayer.
Let us pray. Our most count and gracious heavenly Father God, we thank you, Lord, for this another day. We thank you, Lord, for all the blessings of life. God, tonight, as we go into this meeting, this business meeting for our city, Lord, I just pray that you would grant us the knowledge and wisdom that we need, Lord, to make the best decisions we can on behalf of the city, to help our city to flourish and to be a shining light in the world, Lord. Now, go with us, lead God and direct us. God, I just ask that you grant us all traveling graces back to our homes tonight. These many favors and blessings I ask in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
If anyone want to join us, will pledge to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next is to consider the agenda for adoption. We have an addition under new business. Item three, the pavilion at the fairgrounds. A three. There are no other changes. Do I have a motion to adopt?
Second.
Please vote. Carries five oh. Item five, we need to consider adopting the meeting minutes from the regular meeting of May eighteenth, two thousand twenty-one. Do I have a motion?
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Please vote. Carries five oh. Item six, there is none. Item seven, there is none. Item eight, administration, the two thousand twenty audit report, information only. How we doing?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council, for having Ruston to do your audit for two thousand twenty twenty. So, my name's Clay Pilgrim. I think I met most of you when we were here back in, I guess that was the winter, fall of winter, to hire us to do your audit. So, before, I've got a quick presentation to run through here and it won't take much of your time, but before I do, I wanted to to give my thanks to you all, first of all, but also thank the entire staff, all your department heads, of course, your finance people, we bothered the most, but your, all city employers are very helpful during the audit process. We completed the audit very timely, even though it's a first-year audit. First-year audit, we have to do, not only do we have to audit those year-end numbers, we have to audit the beginning numbers as well. So, we're looking at not only the twelve thirty-one twenty numbers, but also the twelve thirty-one nineteen numbers. So, really asking everybody to pull two different, you know, two different years worth of information. So, a lot of, a lot of information, not to mention the style of the way we do things might be way different from the style of the way your previous auditor does things. And so, it's getting to, you know, getting to know how we do things, and that's getting to know how you do things. So, it's, with that being said, to be standing here, first part of June, the report, as you can see here, is dated April thirtieth. So, that's a testament to the folks you have and the fact that we were able to get this audit done that quick. So, that's, uh, many thanks to your, to your folks, for that matter. All right. So, you should have several documents in front of you there. You've got this bound presentation here, which is where I'll spend most of my time. You've got the actual annual financial report, bound report here, pulled some numbers from this for the presentation. This is where you'll want to spend some time probably reading over the coming weeks. And of course, happy to answer any questions that I don't, you know, give you answers for tonight. I'm happy to answer any future questions as well. Then you got two letters there, one of which I will be quickly running through tonight, is some required communications that I'm required to communicate to you all as council, whereas the governing body of the city. But most of that's boilerplate, and I will move through that very, very quickly unless you stop me. But this, this is where we'll spend most of our time, and that's where I'm going to start. Okay. Flipping on to the second slide there, you will see, we talk about our audit opinion. It refers to pages one and two of the annual financial report. That's where you'll find our independent auditor's report. Uh, that, that independent auditor's report is going to spell out what are the city Cummings' responsibilities. As you all are aware, the financial statements in the annual financial report are the responsibility of Cummings' management. Our responsibility as your auditor are to test and pine upon those financial statements that they are not materially misstated, whether due to fraud or to error. We do follow government auditing standards during our audit process, and I am pleased to present that for two thousand twenty. We do have an unmodified opinion or clean opinion on the financial statements. Nothing came to our attention during the audit that would or prohibit us from issuing an unmodified opinion. All right. I'll always call your attention to two statements. So, this entire bound report, ninety-something, hundred-something, eighty pages total here. There are many statements in that report. There are only two statements in that entire bound report that are going to pull all activities of the city together in one on full accrual basis of accounting. And those are found on pages fourteen and fifteen and sixteen. Fourteen and fifteen is your statement of net position. That statement's like a balance sheet for a business enterprise. It's going to have all your assets, deferred outflows of resources, deferred inflows of resources, your liabilities, and then also your net position or equity of the city. The statement of activities, which is found on page sixteen, is going to be like an income statement for a business enterprise. That's going to present the results of your operations for the year. A few numbers from those statements. You see here, we've got net position. I put a three-year history here for you. So, we've got eighteen, nineteen, and twenty. For fiscal year twenty, you'll see there your net investment capital assets. That's going to be your, um, all your assets, like your, your fixed, your capital assets or fixed assets, like your land, buildings, equipment, vehicles, less accumulated appreciation on those vehicles or assets, less any debt, which in this case, there is none. So, less any debt used to acquire those assets would get you to your net investment capital assets, and that's two hundred twenty-nine million, three fifty-one, zero forty-eight. Restricted net position, this is going to be monies you're holding at year-end that were restricted by an outside source. Splosh would be example. Any special purpose splosh money you have that you're holding that has not been expended yet would be considered restricted. Any other grant monies, those sorts of things would also be restricted. Six million, three ninety-five, eight oh four. Unrestricted net position, of course, would be the remainder of net position. It's forty-four million, four oh two, seven oh two. Gets you to your total net position of two hundred eighty million, one forty-nine, five fifty-four. For the year, there was an increase in net position of eight million, nine oh one, one fourteen for the city. Again, that's all funds. So, that's going to be your general fund, special revenue funds, splosh funds, capital projects fund, and also your water and sewer fund included in those numbers. All right. The next, the next slide here talks about your general fund. This is, of course, where y'all spend a lot of time throughout the year looking at your general fund, as it is the chief operating fund of the city, or of any, really any government for that matter. Uh, for the year, your revenues of the general fund decreased one million, eight fifty-six, zero, zero, nine, or about twelve point seven percent. Good news is local option sales tax, your sales tax there increased seven hundred four, nine thirty-three. Obviously, the cause for the decrease in revenues was the COVID-nineteen pandemic, which you all, we're all, every single person's very familiar with that. But that caused your charges for services related to your recreation, aquatic center, and fairgrounds to be down substantially, a little over two point three million dollars for the year. On the expenditure side, we also saw a decrease there, decreased one million, one oh four, three sixty-six, or about eight and a half percent. Police expenditures actually increased a little, about eight hundred eighty thousand dollars. That was due to personal services increase and also some capital outlay in the general fund for some vehicles there. The decreases largely fell, again, in recreation, aquatic center, and fairgrounds due to COVID-nineteen pandemic, and also decreases in capital in regard to there. And of course, capital is going to be not necessarily annual. You, of course, invest in capital when, when needed. So, with, with saying that, you'll see there, the next line I have, I note the transfers out there. They actually increased ten point eight million during two thousand twenty due to transfers to the capital projects fund for the, mostly predominantly for the city center project that's ongoing. So, with those transfers, you see a decrease in unassigned fund balance. So, we talk about unassigned fund balance. A lot of people refer to that as kind of like a reserve, so to speak, monies you're holding that are not assigned or committed or restricted for use. Those are really available for spending at the discretion of council, mayor and council. Those decrease, the unassigned fund balance decrease for the year went from eighteen million, one fifty-two, zero forty-eight to seven million, three twenty-nine, five eighty-nine. You'll see there largely due to the capital outlay spending during the year, which would, of course, would be anticipated. However, you do still have sixty-two percent. So, if you take that unassigned fund balance number, compare that with your annual expenditures, your two thousand twenty expenditures for the city, it's about sixty-two percent of expenditures, which is about, if you take that and multiply that out, that's about seven point four months. So, basically, what we're saying, not perfect science there, but what we're saying is if your expenditures remained exactly what they were, and you didn't collect another dollar of revenue, you could spend seven point four months with no further revenues. So, that is a healthy number. Even though that did go down there in the year, that's still a very healthy number in regards. GFOA, the Government Finance Office Association, recommends or at least two to three months. So, seven point four being very healthy in that regard for your general fund. All right. The next slide is just kind of a graphical depiction there of your revenues and expenditures. Again, this is just revenues and expenditures. This does not include transfers in or transfers out. I just mentioned transfers out being, being up substantially. So, you'll see here, the revenues being the green line, twelve million, seven seventy-seven, four sixty-four. Your expenditures being the blue line, eleven million, eight twenty-one, nine sixty-three. So, without those transfers for capital outlay, you would have had a, you know, a billion-dollar increase in fund balance. But obviously, with, with the spending on capital, you going to see a decrease there. The next slide is just those fund balance numbers that I just mentioned, except on a graphical depiction here. You'll see there in blues, blue line there is your total fund balance, eight million, two forty-nine, zero thirty-seven. And your green line is just your unassigned fund balance, which is the largest portion of the fund balance, seven million, three twenty-nine, five eighty-nine. The remainder is made up of mostly non-spendable fund balance, which is going to be monies that are not in spendable form, like prepaid expenses, for example. Those are not spendable form. So, those are required to be shown as non-spendable. But the largest part of your fund balance is not, is unassigned. All right. Your water and sewer fund. So, for the year, for two thousand twenty, your water and sewer fund, operating revenues increased five million, four thirty-one, nine thirty-nine, or about twenty-three percent. Water and sewer charges increased three million, five oh eight, five fifty-five. Tap fees increased one million, nine twelve, one oh five. On the operating expense side, those also increased, two million, seven seventy-seven, eight eighty-eight, or about thirteen percent. Personal services was the largest part of that increase at one million, four forty, one ninety-five. And depreciation increased one million, one twenty-five, five twenty-four. That's your depreciation on your capital assets. There are also some substantial investments in capital assets in the water fund as well for the year. Capital contributions, fiscal year twenty, one eighty-one, four fifty-eight versus a little over seven hundred eighteen thousand dollars in the prior year. And then your unrestricted net position, kind of like unassigned fund balance, except in this case, it's considered to be net position because it's full accrual basis of accounting, and a water fund, that's required. Your unrestricted net position is thirty-four million, eight seventy-eight, seven twenty-eight for two thousand twenty. Down from forty-two, three twenty-one, nine eighty-two. Again, a large part of that is going to be your investments in capital assets in the water fund. You see there on the, uh, the next, next slide there is a graphical depiction of the numbers we just talked about, the three-year comparison there. For your operating revenues being the green number, twenty-eight million, six oh six, zero ninety-one. Blue, blue line there is your operating expenses, twenty-three million, five eighty-seven, five eighty-two. And then the net of those is your operating income, five million, eighteen, five oh nine for two thousand twenty.
I have a question. This is income, we have the expenses you're taking out.
The five million, eighteen, five oh nine?
Yes.
Yes. That's operating income. Now, there's other below-the-line items that would also, so in other words, that's not net income, total net income. That's just operating. So, that's operating income, less operating expenses.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Okay. The next slide, so, so as I mentioned earlier, we, we do follow government auditing standards during our audit. So, there are several requirements in regard to government auditing standards that require us to look at your processes, your internal controls, to test compliance. And so, obviously, with a new auditor, sometimes we're, we're looking at things that maybe the prior auditor didn't look at, and they're looking at things that we didn't look at. But we're very big, as a whole, on processes and who's doing what, how the duties are segregated, procedures are in place. And so, as a firm, we are big on that. So, we do a lot of control testing. We do a lot of receipt testing. We do a lot of just sitting down, talking through who's doing what, how they handle it, somebody else reviewing that, somebody else. And so, with that being said, we, um, we did have a handful. I think we had three material weaknesses and seven significant deficiencies that we noted. We did not note any instances of material noncompliance. And so, everybody was very receptive to, to, you know, changing and adding some different controls in, in place. And we've actually already discussed assisting, possibly implementing, and discussing how, you know, best practices in that regard. Sometimes those aren't possible, just, just the size of organizations. Sometimes it doesn't permit to have four or five people involved in the process. It's just the cost benefit just doesn't weigh out. But at the end of the day, you still want us to tell you when we feel like there's a, you know, a process that should be implemented. In some years, not this year, but possibly in future years, just to kind of throw it out there since we're first time here, but in some years, with, if the city expends more than seven hundred fifty thousand dollars in federal funds, we may be required to do a single audit. That was not required for two thousand twenty, as the city did not expend seven hundred fifty thousand in federal. But it could be, if, if that were the case, I'd be talking about a third letter here that we'd be required to do. But in this case, there was no single audit for two thousand twenty. Last couple of things here in my presentation I want to call your attention to. So, we try to keep you all, this governing body, informed of not only standards that were implemented during the current year, but also of things that are coming without, that way you're not, they're not being implemented in a year, and you've not heard about them yet. So, we do have one standard that was required to be implemented during the current year and one that's coming that's pretty, pretty substantial. The one during the current year, current reporting changes here are GASB, which issues the standards, issued statement number eighty-four fiduciary activities that was required to be implemented for two thousand twenty for the city. It required basically, it had several different pieces, eighty-four did, but the largest effect that it had on the city of coming was your agency funds, what were previously called agency funds. And we'll take this a step farther, because previously, the city had your municipal court reported in the general fund, and that's an agency. So, it really should be reported as an agency fund. And so, we implemented eighty-four, assisted in implementing eighty-four, but not only that, we also moved the municipal court to a separate fund, as it should be reported. Eighty-four changed that. It's no longer called an agency fund. It's now called a custodial fund. So, it gets very complicated. But basically, this was implemented during the current year. Broke your municipal court out to show, basically, what, what a custodial fund is, is it's holding monies for others as fiduciary. So, it is a fiduciary activity. And so, those are funds that are, that come in and go right back out to other entities other than the city. And so, that, this was implemented during fiscal year twenty. And eighty-four has much more involved with it, but it really doesn't affect the city. So, I'll, probably don't want to be bored with the details of, of things that don't affect the city in this regard. So. All right. Future reporting changes. GASB statement number eighty-seven, which is leases. So, GASB and FASB, FASB is an organization that issue standards for non-governmental entities. FASB also issued new lease guidance. GASB issued new lease guidance. So, what I'm saying by that is leases are changing across the board, no matter what type of entity we're talking about. And they are changing substantially. So, to quickly sum this up, basically, currently, right now, you account for leases as either a capital lease or an operating lease. With an operating lease, you've just got rent expense or rent revenue if you're the lessor. With a capital lease, of course, you record a liability, and then you also record an asset depreciated. This new lease guidance is going to take us from no longer accounting for it two ways to all accounting, accounting for it one way. Of course, it's going to lean more towards the more difficult side of things, the capital lease side. It's never easier, it seems. But, but basically, the new standard is going to require a, an intangible asset to be recorded, intangible right-to-use asset, and then also a lease liability. So, it's going to be somewhat similar to what we do with capital lease now. Uh, there's a lot of criteria as to whether something meets the criteria of a lease or not. This defines what a lease is. So, what we've been talking with our clients about, I've been having the conversation with Jeff and Allison, the whole finance crew, is basically, to start with now, we're still two years out, although this one was postponed due to COVID by eighteen months. But we're still two years out. But it's important to go ahead and start gathering up all your, and I don't just say gathering up all your leases, gather up all your agreements, contracts. Because some things we may call a contract or an agreement, or some other term we may use for, other than lease, may actually meet the definition of a lease and be, need to be recounted for under this, underneath this standard. So, pull together those, all those contracts to see, first of all, if it meets the criteria of a lease, and then we'll determine how to account for it. Materiality is important here. Uh, we're not going to take something that's, you know, takes five minutes to account for, that's immaterial, and implement a standard that's going to take hours to, to implement when, when it's immaterial. So, that is a, immateriality is a factor here, but that's, that's a judgment call, of course, in that regard. So.
So, would that go into, say, if we were leasing the fairgrounds for renting the fairground, you know, in Arden Mines, we're renting the fairgrounds for a weekend or ten days, does that become a lease?
Would be a lease. However, this does not apply to anything less than twelve months.
Okay.
So, it would exclude those. But it will, it will apply to, like, real estate. So, oftentimes, you have these leases of buildings. The city may lease a building from someone, or lease a building to someone, and that's maybe just an annual lease. So, you're thinking, well, it don't apply. Well, if it's an annual lease with a, with a continuing, then that would apply. And there's, there's ways you may think, there's a way to get around that. We just make all short-term leases. Well, we have to use the more likely than not. If it's more likely than not, you're going to exercise an extension, then it has to be considered. But that is, but yeah, the fairgrounds would be.
That was getting into.
Yeah. That would be a huge one if you, if fairgrounds or using aquatic center, those sorts of things, that would be.
Sounds like it would be if we know the fair doing it every year. But we run the fair, so it's on the list.
Well, that and the, in that case, the fair runs every year, but it's for a limited time. So, it's not, it may be an annual lease, but it's not an annual. The period is not, the duration is not one year. Yeah. So, it's based on the duration.
We're not leasing.
I've got a question. They probably understand this, but I don't.
Sure.
What is an operating lease? That these things were previously?
So, an operating lease, an operating, a good example of an operating lease would be a, um, a copier. Oftentimes, copiers, you may lease a copier from, from the local copier center.
For years.
And they'll, even a five-year, oftentimes on a copier, a five, you have a five-year lease, and you pay two hundred something dollars a month per copier. And at the end of that lease, they come pick it up, or you can buy it for the fair value. And so, that fair value piece or the bargain purchase option is often what makes it go from an operating lease to a, to a capital lease. So, right now, if they say, well, we're going, we're going to lease you this copier for five years, and at the end of the lease, you're just going to give us a dollar, and it's yours. That's a capital lease, because you technically are just buying it, and you're basically financing it.
So, basically, now, we're not going to have those. We're going to have capital.
You're going to have leases, or, or it's not going to apply. You know, as you won't have, you may still have, and, and that, the copier lease example is a great example of when materiality may factor in and not be something we want go down that avenue, because the, the difference in how you account for it as a, as a lease versus what you're doing currently may be a material effect on the financials, and you wouldn't want to go accounting for. Yeah. All right. So, that concludes, as far as numbers are concerned, unless you all have specific questions, I'm happy to answer. If not, I do got to run through real quick one of these letters I've got here.
Go ahead.
All right. So, this, the letter I'm, I'm referring to here says, significant audit matters. It's underlined, about second paragraph there. It used to say significant audit findings, and I'm glad they changed the word. Like I said, this is all boilerplate. It comes straight out of our standards. So, it's not something we control. But it used to say significant audit findings, and I'm always like, it says significant audit findings, and everybody's like, significant audit findings, and we got a concern here. There's no concerns at all in this letter right here. Matter of fact, if there were concerns in this letter right here, I'm about to run through it real quick with you. You would know about it long before now, because they're not like, this process needs changing, or this number is out of whack, or, these are like, we could not get management to provide us with what we needed, you know? Phil was very difficult to deal with, or, you know, those sorts of things. That, that would be what this would be, and I would let you know long before now. I wouldn't be standing here telling you that, uh, when I'm presenting the audit. I promise you. If, if so, you'd need to fire me a long time ago. Uh, but what this is, basically, these are some required communications. And again, I'm going to move very quickly here. But, but I am required to communicate to you that the significant accounting policies of the city are found in note one. That's in this big bound report. Note one's probably ten, fifteen pages. I always make my joke here. You'll hear it first time here, and maybe, maybe I'll have to hear it again. But when, when, when you're struggling to sleep at night, note one is where you flip to. You will soon be asleep in no time, unless you're an accountant, and even us accountants get bored with that information from time to time. All right. So, but that is found in note one. All right. Accounting estimates. So, as you know, most all financial statements do have estimates in them. We're required to let, communicate to you. We feel like the most sensitive estimates are life expectancy of your capital assets, how long they're appreciated, and then your allowance for doubtful accounts on your utility billing receivables. So, we do have an allowance there sometimes for collectibility. Again, difficulties encountered performing the audit. We had no difficulties in performing the audit. I wouldn't have been given glowing praise on your staff when I first stepped up here if that was the case, and I also would have let you know that long before now. Corrected and uncorrected misstatements. So, during the audit process, we do have, from time to time, journal entries, although not a lot of those here at the city, as your finance folks do a great job getting things in line. Due to timing and the fact we can't wait, but so long before we have to start doing the audit, sometimes there are adjustments we have to make. We do provide a copy of all of those adjustments to management. Those have been posted to your general ledger. Uh, we also, from time to time, have adjustments we pass on. So, those would be immaterial or trivial. They would not affect the, the numbers. We do accumulate those, though, and also make sure that in total, those are not material to the financial statements. We also provide a copy of those to management as well to confirm they are immaterial. Disagreements with management. Pleased to present, we do not have any disagreements with management to obtain any type of second opinion or anything like that. Management has not reached out to other independent accountants that we're aware of to obtain any kind of, like I mentioned, second opinion on any issues that, that came up that we could not resolve. Very important piece of this, the management representation letter. So, during our audit, we ask a lot of questions. We request a lot of documentation. Obviously, we can only audit what we receive, and so, or audit what we are told. So, this letter, which we're required to have in our file, is signed by management, saying that they answered everything to the best of their abilities, and they provided us everything they had, and didn't basically withhold anything that may change our opinion on the financial statements. We do have a copy of that letter in our files. And that pretty much concludes the, as far as required communications. I mentioned earlier, we have some suggestions for improvement and such. That's what that other letter is you have there in front of you in regard to processes, policies, procedures, those sorts of things. And I'm happy to answer any questions at all. And, and obviously, there's a lot more information in this audit than, than what I just went through in ten, fifteen minutes here. But if you're looking back through this, have further questions, happy to come back. If you want to reach out to me by phone. Here, we're here year-round. We don't want to be your necessary evil at year-end. We want to be available to you throughout the year.
You've given us some things to look at, recommendations.
Yes.
Now, you came up with these during the audit?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, some of that from testing, some of that from just discussion of policies and procedures and sitting down. That's the first thing we do is, is sit down with department heads and finance people in different offices and say, hey, who's doing this? How are they doing it? Who's reviewing it? Nobody's reviewing. Okay. Well, it's probably good practice. Have some review. Well, we don't have anybody to review. Okay. Well, that's, you know, those are things, just, some of these things take time to, to implement. They're not things you can usually do overnight for the most part. Some of them are easy, flip a switch and run a different report or that sort of thing. But others, not so much.
Hey, want to have any questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you. Appreciate you all.
Thank you very much. Next is item two, IGA with Forsyth County Elections, information only.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, we, uh, excuse me, we contracted Forsyth County for the, for the county Department of Registrations and Elections to handle your elections for you. The city doesn't have its own better equipment or anything like that. The county has that. We've been doing this for at least the past ten years. I think, I think the last time we signed this agreement was in two thousand and eleven. That agreement's up. And the county sent over a, um, a document for us to consider. Um, I joked to, to Phil that it went from two pages to thirteen pages in ten years. But that being the case, it's really no different than it was before. There's just some more detail spelled out. This is for informational purposes only. What it boils down to at the end of the day is that if there is an election that is a city election, the city is going to pay for it. If there is an election that is a election that the city has something on it, but there's also a county election. For example, you had, at one point, I believe, we put on a ballot, um, the question about alcohol sales. That was a city-specific question that came up during a county general election. You would only pay for your portion of whatever that cost to have that part of the ballot created and those sorts of things. Anyway, that's, it's a very straightforward agreement, I believe. You have, uh, we really need to consider this at your next meeting. So, if you have any questions about it, please don't hesitate either to ask me now or to reach out and ask me, because the agreement that we currently have in place does expire in July, and the county intends to consider this agreement this month as well.
Any questions or discussion?
It seems like the accounting for that is pretty simple, because it's.
It seems like the accounting for that is pretty simple, because it's separate years, I would guess.
That's correct.
Except for when you have the one-off thing on there.
Or a special election, if you were to have a commissioner step down, for example, um, you know, not that that's going to happen or anything like that, but if you had a commissioner step down, and they had to get a special election scheduled, and they happened to schedule it for this fall, if there is a city election this fall, then, um, then at that point, you would have, uh, a, a lower cost for your city election than you otherwise normally would, because the county's got to get everybody out and out to vote anyway.
So we need to get them to put things on the ballot when we have elections to lower our costs?
That's the plan, yes, exactly. You want countywide elected officials to step down, yes, that's exactly.
Or some, or something.
That's right.
Or change our elections to governor or presidential times, and then.
Well, we could, we could, uh, we could also try doing that. But I don't think we want to open the charter up for the General Assembly, but we could do that, that's a possibility.
Any questions? Thank you, Kevin.
Thank you.
Uh, number three, pavilion for the fairgrounds.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor, members of council. If you think back to when we, uh, built the bridge over Castleberry Road, we also built the ticket booth, uh, for the fairgrounds. We had one more project in mind at that time, and that was a pavilion next to the ticket booth. Uh, we put that project off immediately, because we had the fair coming in right behind the bridge being done, so we put the pavilion off, we planned on doing it the next spring. The next spring came around and COVID hit. Everything kind of went haywire, so we kind of put that project off a little further. Now, here we are, we're, uh, we're looking at the fair coming back in October, and it would surely be a good time to build this pavilion now, uh, with expecting the fair to be, you know, highly attended this fall. And, uh, we've reached out to a local, uh, contractor, uh, for the scope of work that we need done on this. Uh, he has provided us a quote, uh, for sixty-four thousand eight hundred dollars. This quote is, I would say, probably right in line right now with the way building, uh, materials are. Uh, so we would like to get your approval to, uh, build this pavilion, uh, as soon as we can. We have collected enough impact fee money in recreation to cover the cost of construction. And I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Why didn't it go out for bids?
It's not, uh, well, it's not over a hundred thousand dollars, so we don't have to, we don't have to put it out for bid, we can solicit quotes for anything under a hundred thousand.
Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
This is a complete building except for the electrical, which we can get city staff to do the electrical for a few lights and fans.
Yep.
What do you use this for?
What do we use the pavilion for? Uh, it'll be a great place for around, where it's at over at Gate C, uh, near, next to the new ticket booth. We really don't have any, uh, covered areas for people to sit and eat, or to congregate. Um, and that's one thing we've heard over the years, uh, about the fair, is they wish, the, the patrons, that's one common thing, they wish we had more eating areas over on that side of the fairgrounds. Uh, we've got a, a good covered, covered pavilion at the Gate A section, you know, next to the old, uh, sawmill and the syrup mill and all that, but on the other side of, of the fairgrounds, there's really not, and there's, there's plenty of food vendors over there. And, uh, you know, if you buy your food all the way over on that side, then you got to walk all the way back over to Gate A. A lot of people don't want to do that.
I love park benches, it's a twenty by thirty-six. We already poured approved and poured a pad for the building.
That's good.
So this is what we agreed to call lead better overlook for Lewis.
For Lewis, okay.
Right.
How cute, alright.
So you said bench, you'll put bench, we'll put benches or picnic tables under there or something?
We'll sit him there on his scot.
It's enough that you can put double runs all the way down it, and that's plenty of room.
Hold court.
I said we would put Lewis there on his scot.
Yeah, that'd be a good place.
They'll get a same chair at the end.
Any other questions? I have a motion to approve.
Motion to approve, uh,
The second.
Whatever we put here, whatever we're calling it, the, the pavilion ticket booth, I guess.
On the second.
Second.
Please vote. Carries five oh. Next is item B, the city center, change order for buildings A, B, C, D for concrete.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor, the reason for this request is, uh, to remove the current design of wall, excuse me, wall footings for these four, uh, buildings and replace them with footings that include the helical piers. Uh, this is necessary because of soil conditions that could not be detected at the time when the plans were initially drawn. Uh, after deducting the cost of the, the footings that are in place now, and then adding back the cost of the helical piers, uh, with the foundation, it would be, result in a net change of a hundred and six thousand six hundred and forty-two dollars. After consulting with our construction manager, the contractor on site, and the engineer in charge of the project, uh, I would like to request your approval to, uh, approve this change order, and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
What are these?
Helical piers, and I've learned this since we started this project.
Helical pier is, picture, you know, what an auger is?
Mm-hmm.
The rotating teeth?
Mm-hmm.
So if you have a soft soil condition, they take this helical, and they drive it down in the ground, it rotates and it goes down until it gets to hard dirt.
So it won't move.
So then, that gives a solid foundation, then they pour concrete on top of this steel post that they put in the ground.
Kind, it kind of acts like an anchor plate to the foundation.
Like you do around a river.
So there's some places over there where they've went actually a hundred feet deep with one of these helical piers, and then the distance from me to Joey, that thing went ten feet in the ground. From me to Joey, that was the difference in soil density and ten feet was ninety feet of difference. It's really crazy how it works, but, but it's a more economical way of doing it than driving in steel I-beams that go down until they hit something solid, so it's a cheaper way of doing it.
Okay, thank you.
But if you don't have a good foundation, you're going to have a problem later.
Any other questions? Have a motion to approve?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve change order on buildings A, B, C, and D for a hundred and six thousand six hundred and forty-two dollars.
Second. Please vote. Carries five oh, thank you, Phil.
Thank you.
Item C, utilities, number one, report on RFP for Oakwood Drive Storm Sewer.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, we advertised for proposals for, uh, the Oakwood Drive Stormwater Pipe. There's an issue there with, uh, other stormwater detention ponds and the area draining down towards Oakwood Drive and causing flooding and other issues. And so, we investigated, uh, a design, uh, previously, we had a design, and we're not able to successfully get the easements behind some of the residences, and since then, we've looked more at the road, and we think that's the better way to go anyway. So, we, we got five, uh, proposals, and we talked to North Georgia Pipeline, and, uh, we're able to do some different methods of installing that line, we, we tried to find some ways to value engineer. Their RFP quote originally was five hundred and twenty-four thousand five hundred and sixty-nine dollars and fifty cents. And we're able to get it dropped down, it's, uh, five hundred and twelve thousand sixty-nine dollars and fifty cents. I think that's about twelve thousand five hundred dollars that it came down, just for, we changed it.
Five hundred and twelve sixty.
Yes, sir, it's five hundred and twelve thousand zero six nine and fifty cents.
How'd you get that lowered?
We changed the method of installing the pipe a little bit, and it cheapened it up. So we tried to look for some ways to value engineer this project, so.
Was this budgeted?
It was, yes, ma'am. So these, there are five, the high group was Helix Group, and the amount is seven hundred and eighty-nine thousand three oh seven and eleven cents. And everyone else was sort of in between, but we, we recommend going with North Georgia Pipeline, we've used them a lot. They're a really good and reliable contractor.
I know I should know, but where's Oakwood Drive?
It's a Perkwood Circle that goes to Pivotal Mill.
Oh, where all that water comes off that church?
That's right. That's the area.
It's really bad there.
It is bad, and this should solve it.
But John, I want to commend you, and, you know, a while back, the city changed processes of taking bids versus now we take RFPs. So in this case, we saved twelve thousand five hundred dollars by figuring out a cheaper way of doing the same deal. And, uh, this is a small amount, we've had other projects where we've saved half a million dollars, seven hundred thousand dollars, it's.
Well, any amount's good.
It's, uh.
It's good to be able to sit down with a contractor and say, okay, what do you see that could be done better and less expensive? And many times, they've got ideas, sometimes they don't work.
Andy's a great engineer, but, you know, those Georgia Tech guys can spend some money, so.
Well, that's true, that's true, we worry about that all the time.
Louis isn't here, I had to throw it in, Andy, I'm sorry. But, but sometimes there's a cheaper way to skin a cat.
And sometimes you just don't see all the ways to do it, you know, when you're working on the design and everything, so, that helps.
Any other questions? Is this changing the, I mean, is this the pipe going under the road, or is this?
So, so the pipe coming out of the detention pond that's behind and above the residences just empties out into a ditch, then it runs through the yards of some of the other residences. Uh, it's not that it was built improperly or anything, it's, it really, we just need a better conveyance system out there. And so, when we looked at it, we decided if we could capture all that water and everything else, you know, there's other drain, drainage areas to put it in a big enough pipe, get it right to the creek, we'd be doing better for all those residents out there, so.
Did the church do an adequate job of that detention pond?
They did, and we, you know, we've analyzed it to see if it was built properly, and it was. It was built according to the plan. There's some ideas that we have to improve it, so we're working with the church on that, and they're, they're cooperating with us.
How long's it been doing this?
That's a good question, maybe, maybe since it was actually built, really.
Didn't really work.
So it's been, it's been a while, sometimes you, you can raise the outlet structure a little bit, and that holds the water back longer, but you want to be careful that there's enough volume, and it's not going to cause other problems, so.
I noticed the last time, uh, it was across the road, you know, it was just really dangerous.
And we have had a lot of rain lately, so, and that actually exacerbates the problem.
So that fifty-year flood event we had, any of this isn't going to change Oakwood Drive flooding, it will still flood.
You know, I don't know.
The creek coming over its banks.
Over its banks, well, if it, yes, if, if, if the creek's coming over its banks, that's right. This is, this would be a drop in the bucket, so to say, compared to what all water runs into the creek.
But under normal circumstances, it'll be a big improvement.
It will operate properly now, that's right.
Well, this overflowed so much, it did go to the creek. You know, it never flowed, went the road to the creek, so.
Right, that, I mean, it's just adding to the problem, that's right.
Well, it's still going to go to the creek, it's just keeping it from going through people's yards before it gets to the creek.
So it's still going to go to the creek?
Still got to go to the creek, or way around it.
The creek just floods, you know, it's.
Well, the creek floods, I mean, that, yeah, it floods every time, there's a lot of water.
A lot of water comes down through there.
You hear Matthew complain, I don't know.
Any other questions?
Five twelve oh sixty-nine fifty, because in, in our letter, it's five thirteen eight nine five.
That's right, uh, we, we had another change, which brought it down further.
Okay, just wanted to make sure.
At the end of the day.
I'll make a motion to approve North Georgia Pipeline for five hundred and twelve thousand sixty-nine dollars and fifty cents.
Second. Please vote. Carries five oh.
Thank you, Mayor and Council.
Number two, request to advertise for RFP additional nine hundred horse vertical turbine pump for Forsyth County.
So in our raw water intake, we house the pumps for the city, as well as the pumps for the county. The county has their own water treatment plant, we have our water treatment plant. And so, you know, o- on an ongoing basis, really, we analyze vulnerabilities to make sure we identify where we might be vulnerable, because, you know, water is such a critical thing. Um, in one of our analyses of the intake, we determined that the county really needed an additional pump. And the nine hundred horsepower pumps are the big ones, they're the biggest ones we have. The city has an extra, an additional nine hundred horsepower pump in the well, you know, installed. We can turn a button and turn it on, so we have a backup for us. We talked to the county, and we believe they need a backup also, and they agree. And their, uh, commission committed to, uh, commit about one point eight million dollars towards this project to pay for it. Um, let's see, I was trying to see, our, our estimate's one point five six two million, so the county put a little bit more money in there in the event some of the co- the cost go up. Uh, once we get the bids back, if they happen to be in excess of one point eight million, we'll go back to the county and talk to them about it. But their intent is to fully pay for this project, so we don't have to expend our funds, you know, to, to build it. Um, so, we're requesting to be able to go out for RFPs on this project, so we can get that additional large pump install on behalf of Forsyth County.
Any questions?
Make a motion to approve the RP.
Second. Please vote. Carries five oh, try to save them all the money you can, John.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Number three, storm drain pipe at Kelly Mill landfill.
So we have, uh, an old landfill, of course, you're all aware of it, that we own on Kelly Mill Road. Uh, that's a great site to take additional soil, so a lot of our projects, including the city center, uh, the new Buford Dam Road, some of the water projects, we're all taking additional soil over there, and that thing's beginning to fill up. So, in the process of that, we, we've seen where a lot of the, uh, soils washing, we want to make sure that it doesn't get to the creek. And to be able to utilize all the capacity of the landfill and keep pushing that soil out, we need to put in a pretty big storm drain, it's about a thirty-six inch in diameter storm drain. If we can do that, we can continue and, you know, make sure the slopes are not so steep. Right now, they're steep slopes, we can slope it out better, and, you know, it's, it's going to help the whole situation, and give us the ability to continue to use it. And so, we got two, uh, really RFPs, we've talked to both of the contractors, but Jasper Grading Pipeline was the cheapest at seventy thousand seven hundred and thirty-eight dollars. Uh, Townley also bid on it for us, and theirs was ninety-one thousand eight hundred and sixty dollars, so we'd like to, and, and Jasper Grading and Townley, both are emergency contractors for us, but we'd like to go with the low bid from Jasper Grading Pipeline to get this done.
Any discussion? Have a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion that we accept, accept a low proposal amount of seventy thousand seven hundred and thirty-eight dollars from Jasper Grading and Pipeline for the construction of a storm drain pipe at Kelly Mill Landfill.
Take it by Jason, please vote. Carries five oh. Number four, request purchase trucks for water distribution.
Mayor and Council, we budgeted for four, uh, replacement pickup trucks. We have existing trucks that have high mileage, these were approved in this year's budget. I put them all into one item, I'm, I'm not sure, can, do we, do we have to make separate motions on each truck, or can we? No.
You got two and two, I think, right?
So I think there's two and two. Uh, you talk about a challenge, finding a pickup truck nowadays, there's computer issues, computer chips, and, and we've approached different dealerships that weren't interested. We even, we even called, because we love our mayor, we called the Dodge Place too, and they wouldn't respond, so I'm sorry, Mayor.
They want high dollar for a Dodge.
They want high dollar.
It's a Cadillac.
And Dean didn't, and Dean didn't respond.
You got some good prices, did you not?
I think those are good prices, yes, ma'am, I do, especially for this day and age, but, um.
And Dean wasn't, I mean, they didn't have anything?
No, 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 they weren't, they weren't, they didn't want to bid, so, um. Anyway, we have two, uh, from Billy Howell Ford. One is in, is the low bid at thirty thousand eight sixty-one, it's for an extended cab. And then, the next one is a regular cab, and it's twenty-nine thousand eight hundred and twenty-three dollars. And we would like to propose buying those two low bids from, uh, those trucks from Billy Howell Ford incoming.
They couldn't do all four, huh?
They couldn't what now?
Billy Howell couldn't do all four?
They can, but they're higher on the other two.
Yeah, they were higher, yeah, that's right.
What is the difference on those other two on the bottom than the top two?
It's a good question.
That's what I was, that's... Right, yeah, the extended cab four by four.
They both say extended cab, though. You got an extended cab on top, and you got two extended cabs on the bottom.
That's right.
I mean, it's obviously maybe a package or something, 'cause...
It has something to do, you know, I didn't really...
Four thousand dollars difference.
Yeah, 'cause the bottom two, John, are saying extended cab four by four, and the top one's extended cab four by four. But there's a...
That's right.
Almost a four thousand dollar difference.
That's a good question, though.
Maybe it's got something that you have to have that others didn't have.
Well, it's probably just some sort of internal navigation, I don't know, some sort of package.
Almost an eight thousand dollar difference, huh?
Yeah.
With Billy Howell. Yeah, Billy Howell, but it could, it could be that particular vehicle's been on, sitting on their lot for a longer time.
Are these vehicles in stock, or are these ordered?
You know, they all have to be ordered.
Oh, well.
This day and age, I, I think the, we talked to the Billy Howell group and the John Meagle group, and they said that they were on the way, like, within thirty days, they'd have them to us because of the computer chip issue. I don't really see the difference.
Tell me what that top one time's for.
What do you say?
It's all three, they got one regular cab.
Yeah, but for two, for another nine hundred per thousand bucks, you can get a bigger cab.
He might could've just only got the one, you know?
Say it again.
Billy Howell might could've just only got the one, the one truck with the one fifty extended cab.
It came from two different areas, so...
I'm gonna recommend this, John, if...
Okay.
Go back and figure out the difference on truck one versus three and four.
Mayor, we could just say, get them all three from Billy Howell, since they're...
Well, if, make sure you can get all, yeah, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah, he can't even get them.
He may not have three.
I'm saying, just find out, you see what we're looking at, showing, and, and I mean, I'm looking at the specs, but unless we're gonna sit here for a while for me to line off and check the specs of the John Meagle extended cab versus the Ford extended cab.
See, Billy Howell quoted the first extended cab thirty thousand eight hundred and sixty-one, then he did the second two extended cabs at thirty-eight thousand.
Yeah.
So there's something different there, so if you can figure out the differences, or see, can you work with three of the extended cabs at the thirty-eight sixty-one, and then the one regular cab?
I think, I think we, since we're ordering them, I think we can get them all three from Billy Howell at thirty thousand eight sixty-one.
He didn't offer them to you, he offered them at one at that price and two at that price.
I'm saying, if you'll just find out and then come back, is two weeks gonna kill you?
No, it won't, no, that's fine.
Just find out, and then come back in two weeks, and then we can...
All right.
What, John, what's the reason for having the single, regular cab and the extra cab?
Just the employee, what they might have to store in the back, and the ones that wouldn't.
I mean, for another thousand dollars, you can have all four of them look dead, but...
Yeah, well, that's true, could just have them all extended, yeah. Let me look into that, and I'll come back next time, it might be real simple, there might just be one, one dealer and one truck, so, let me do that, come back next time.
All right, that work with you?
Yeah, that works good.
All right.
Thank you, Council, thank you, Mayor.
Just while we're on it, it looks like two of them may be crew cab. The bottom two may be crew cab trucks.
What's that mean?
Four doors.
Four doors versus two doors and two little doors.
Let me, let me look into that, just to make sure it's even needed.
It is saying crew cab, now that Joey says that, and then there's extended cab.
That may be the price. Yeah.
And a regular cab.
So the extended's just gonna be two doors and then the little half door, little half doors.
All right.
So if you want, just find out, and then, or see, can you make them work the other way, or...
Okay.
If you need all four doors, you need all four doors.
Sure, I understand, that works, yeah, thank you.
All right. Item nine, there is none, executive session, I don't believe there is one, have a motion to adjourn.
Go ahead.
Please vote. Carries five oh.